Can I get a motion to call this meeting to order at 6:39?
Motion.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Approval of the agenda. Is there any changes to it?
Yeah, there are no liquor licenses.
No liquor licenses.
Excellent.
They're just removing number five.
So we're removing number five. Approval of the minutes. A discussion of that. The TIF district is in there. Public Works Director's up here. Consideration adoption of a code of ethics policy. I just got this like, I mean, I'm going through it. Can we table this until we have a full board of five? Instead of making a vote today with just three here? And also for the personnel, not the personnel policy. There's another thing in here for rules of procedure. So the three of us are going to vote. I don't think we're gonna have a meeting on May 26th. It's Memorial Day. The election, that's our next meeting in two weeks. The election occurs two days after that. They will be sworn in the next day, whoever they are. And, you know, no matter what, I still think that two board members coming in should have a say on how the meetings are run. Plus the fact of reading pages of how it's to be run. We already have today how a meeting's to run. I think it just got, and I'll say, all sides, a little out of hand. I'll put it that way, okay? So I really do believe that those two items should be respectfully to the two others that are gonna come in. And I don't know who they are. You know? So we did the same thing for you guys on certain things because we didn't know who was gonna come in, even though there was two seats up. So, plus the fact to go through some of the other items on the, on the rules of procedure. Just to be quite honest with you, one of the things in there states that we have 48 hours if we wanted something to add in on a special meeting. But a special meeting could be warned 24 hours in advance. So how do we know? Okay, so there's a couple of little tiny things in there, but I'd rather get whoever they are.
Do you wanna put any, those little corrections in now so that we have a
Well, I mean, we can, we can talk to Dave or send our stuff to Dave if you're reading through it.
Okay.
You know, so we can get ours in. But I still think it would be nice to maybe even send prior to the vote to the four people that are running, the rules of procedure adoption, and also the code of ethics in there. I mean, the personal policy is just a discussion. They're not taking any action today, so we can get that going. But they'll be involved in it the first meeting of June.
And I think that the ethics is effectively the same thing that's already in place. It's just a language clean-up.
Yeah.
I don't think that would have a big impact.
No, so I mean, we already have who somebody wants to make an ethics complaint to. And it's in process, so we can go from there.
Can you just try to see if I can just work it?
The microphone's working.
It is working.
So, Ron Kish, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
You just turned on.
Okay. So what I'm getting is, can I get a motion to amend the agenda that we're gonna take out item number four? We're gonna take out number five. And we're going to take out number 11. Correct, Patrick and Ricky?
Yep.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that being said, approval of the minutes of March 24th. I was already there with it, so I think maybe Ricky, you had something in here?
Yeah, hold on a minute here.
And the minutes that I have in front of me, really in my packet, are just the April 28th and the May 1st.
Mine wasn't the one from March. It was 14th and the 28th, actually.
Okay.
I think that the one from March, Patrick hadn't had a chance to read over, I believe.
But the minutes that I have in front of me today is April 28th and May 1st. That's what I have in front of me.
So you guys have been given those minutes twice.
Yeah, I had the 14th.
Yeah, I had the 14th. I don't have it because I'm being told this is my copy for me to come to the meeting today. I didn't think I had to go and, but I'm okay with, was already in those two?
Are you, which one are you asking right now?
So right now, we're looking at March 24th.
March 24th. I don't have any, I don't have any written notes in here.
No, I didn't.
Good.
Can I get a motion to accept the meeting minutes of March 24th?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we have April 14th.
We were tabled at the last one because I think we had some questions on it.
Let me find my notes here. On this one, it says delinquent tax letter. Maybe I missed it, but I don't remember us saying that we were going to follow up with the other person that was mentioned in that letter. I don't know.
Can you read what's there?
Says, "The delinquent tax letter also referred to another taxpayer's mispayment notice which included different circumstances. The Select Board will follow up with the town to contact this taxpayer."
And we would not do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not our job.
Yeah.
So strike that line.
And also, number 15, both bullets are the same, actually. The funeral one?
Yeah. So the one was for the town hall and the one is for the FEMA.
For the FEMA, yeah. So they're
It says it on the top of the thing and then it just repeated, so.
Okay. And then the other thing was under Select Board member comments and concerns. It said something about payroll came from an issue with vacation slash sick time and holiday pay where employees were not following policy. I watched the meeting and that was not said in the meeting.
Which number was that?
That was 18.
The second bullet. So we can, we can strike that from there. And I'm gonna say in today's meeting, this whole issue of coming up with where we're packed with town employees in the building since the day of Michael Ramsey locating that policy was not being followed and came to Chris Carr, Rob Hacker, and myself and told us that it wasn't being followed. And the town employees told us that the policy was wrong. So for the record, today, we'll strike it from that one there. But for the record today, that's where a lot of these issues started here. Because underneath, a previous town manager. The policy was written up on September 19, 2019, and it clearly states what the policy is for vacation and sick time. And the first time that that board that I sat on with Chris and Rob, that we ever heard that people were having problems with it, instead of just coming to us and saying that there was a problem with it, they just disregarded the policy after signing it. So that will be in the minutes of the next time to be approved. Do you have anything else in there, Ricky?
Not that one.
Okay. So can I get a motion to approve the minutes of April 14th, 2025, with all those changes? And then for the future minutes underneath this, my statement. Okay, motions?
Motion. Quick question. Are you taking the note?
I've written it down here. Well, this, what Jim just said's in the video, so that will be in the minutes anyway.
Okay.
I'll just bring it down where we need to strike out of.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion.
All in favor for April 14th, 2025?
Aye.
Aye.
April 28th, 2025?
So on this one, I noticed on, not that it's a big deal, but number seven, it says that flood recovery work from Ledge End to Rim Road, I think it was for the bridge. Shouldn't it be on Ledge End and on Rim Road? Not like, it sounds like it's one continuous bridge all the way down.
It's for Ledge End and Rim Road, I believe. Abby?
I'm sorry?
So on the number seven, for Heritage Engineering, Abby Sherman, Public Works Director, discussed the proposal for Heritage. And it says, made a motion to accept the Heritage Engineering, what the hell is up above? The July 2023 flood recovery work from Ledge End to Rim Road. Is it structural engineering needed related to July 23 flood from Ledge End to Rim Road? I don't know. I, I do think there was a culvert that goes from ledge through down to
There's a stream.
There's a stream.
And there are two bridges that we hired Heritage Engineering for, to design those bridges for Ledge End and Rim Road.
Ledge End and Rim Road.
They carry the same stream, yes.
Okay. But they are the same stream?
Yes.
So either way is okay, but we'll go with Ledge End and Rim Road? Ricky?
Yep.
Okay.
And the other one is number 15, said that I stated he would support an investigation into the hostile work environment in the town hall, specifically regarding timesheets and vacation time. I did not say that.
Well, I recall you saying that you did want, you agreed with
Yeah, I did not say about the timesheets and stuff, about the
So we'll strike the timesheets. But you did ask for, you did agree that a financial audit should be conducted? You, you would support an investigation into the hostile work environment in the town hall?
Yes.
Specifically regarding, and we're just gonna drop after that.
Okay.
Okay?
Works for me.
On that one, do we need to fix the numbering in the very front? Where we have a, we have a blank number six? Just keep it consistent with the rest of it? And that's the top cover.
I think we dropped whatever six was, so.
Yeah, I think it wasn't reflected then in the numbering. So just correct the number and go on.
Just correct it there.
Yeah. Top of the wire should be seven and then go from there.
So then the next part, though, Select Board half agreed that a financial audit should be conducted on vacation time, sick time, and holiday time. I did say that. Select Board half clarified that the Select Board's job is to set policy. However, they do not enforce the policy. I said that. Select Board members and the town manager continue to hold a discussion on payroll and severance decisions. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
With those changes?
Yep.
May 1st, 2025, which was really just a liquor license approval, and it was just you two. You have to approve the minutes.
Yeah.
No, we didn't vote on that one.
We didn't have to approve that one.
What do you mean?
Oh, we did, we didn't, we just motioned on it.
Just motioned. You don't have to second it?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May 1st, 2025, I did not make this meeting. It was for, it was only for a liquor approval, so I can't say what was said there or whatever, but I believe it should be
It's fine.
Can I get a motion to accept the minutes of May 1st, 2025?
I'll say, or second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I was not there, so I couldn't vote. Okay?
It's a very short meeting.
Sure it was. I was, I was running seven minutes late. I think I saw Ricky driving away from town hall as I was pulling out from a site visit. Okay? We are not doing the rules of procedures. We are not doing the Board of Liquor Control. Appointment of a new lister to fill the vacant position term, and I believe we put that out, Dave, on the website.
I can, I can
Go ahead, take it from there.
So we did list, throw the vacant lister position on the website, and we put it in the paper, too, as per the Select Board, ran it for, till the 15th, I believe, of April, and this is, we've only had one inquiry, and that was Krista Moser. So
Again, a motion to accept Krista Moser to fill the vacant position of the new lister?
Motion.
And that will run until the next election, election, and she'll have to rerun. So on that topic here, a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. On that topic, Pat Lindemeyer has stepped down. I'd like to say thank you very much for all the time that she's put in. But also at the same time, that since Pat had a step down, Krista Moser has been coming in, and I think she has, I don't know, 10, 12 hours or whatever coming in, and she couldn't put in apparel, and I would like to get, I would like to make a motion that we, it's in the budget, that we reimburse Krista Moser for the time that she came in while we were waiting to do our procedure, that she gets paid for her time to put it in.
Recorded and all that.
You know, she has her timesheets. She has not put them in because she's not
Can we do that? It's Beck. Beck pays for, I would love to do it. I don't know if we can do that.
It's in budget. I'm asking you two. I think it's unfair to have someone that's coming in and doing work and not paying them. What I believe that
Can we structure this like a stipend, though, or something?
I don't know how to work it out, but I do think, I agree, she should get paid for it. She should get paid for it.
I don't know how to
So can I get a motion for the town manager to look into how we can compensate Krista Moser for the time that she came in? All in favor? Aye. You could just ask someone to get legal, Dave, I guess, or whatever, how to work that out. Discuss sale of old fire station property. I'm gonna let you take this, Dave, because
So in your packet, there's
And when we say old fire station, which one?
In your packet, there's an email from a guy named Dylan Conti, and this is about the fire station at 3852 River Road, parcel number 23-66. He did, he had emailed the interim at, at some point, and he reached out to me again, check, seeing if there was any interest in the town conveying that property. He's one of the adjoining landowners. So this is the email he's got there. As you see, he's pretty, he's pretty descriptive in why he wants it. It's certainly the board's decision to do what they wanna do, but I would just like to suggest that if we're, if the board considers that they wanna, decides they wanna sell property, we should put it out to bid and do a sealed bid process so that other folks have the opportunity to bid on it. Because I know that there was some interest on it with someone else a while ago, too, so from what I've been told.
Person's online today.
But putting it, you know, putting it out for public bid really gives everyone the opportunity to try to, try to win it. So I think that's what you guys do with, if you're selling any equipment or anything, that there's a bid process. And I would, I would suggest that, recommend that that's the way you do this with town property as well.
Have we gone through the different departments to see if there's any use for the building before we put it up for sale?
I haven't done anything with it because I need to bring it to the board first to see if they want it to even entertain selling it. So that's where this process starts. And if the board decides that they wanna look at other options for it, then that's what we'll do. But it's not my decision to make, so bringing it to the board to see what they're taking on it.
They'd like us to go around to the public works to the, anyone else?
Is it being used right now?
No, it's not.
I think the, yeah, it is. Isn't the old Ford Excursion in it or something?
And we put some old stuff back that we brought up. They were told to clean it out. We brought all the stuff back down because we were told to do that, so if I need to clean it out again, let me know.
So
Yeah, I would say, let's see if there's, let's see if there's
Can you, I know your name. Can you say it so the person writing the minutes, because then
Craig Bowman, chief.
Thank you. So I would
I, I think just check around, see, would be the, you know, to do the
The due diligence of
Yeah, the right protocol on it would be that, I would think that would be the right thing to do.
And if there is no use for it in the town, then I think we should put it out like we did with the other old fire station? We gave a description of the property. We put it in the paper. We put it on the website for sale as is, and wait for the bids to come in.
Is there anything, can you also look to see if there's any kind of stuff preventing a sale, like weed or tax or anything weird like that? I mean, it's ours, so it shouldn't be, but
Right, it's ours, yeah. We better not have any tax laws. We'll find out next month when we start
So we did not, we did not own this property, just so you know.
Right, because that's what I thought was given.
So the school, the school gave it to the Sherburne Valley, Sherburne Fire Department, volunteer fire department, and this was something that when we went to sell the other piece of property, did not know about that. Did not know about certain pieces around the old firehouse, which they're taking care of that up there. I know Tom did a, worked with Dave Kopeck on this piece of property before we took control of the property. There was an environmental phase one study done on the property to clear the property because we did not want to take a piece of property that would be environmental hazard site.
Yeah.
That's all done, and it's somewhere in the file, Dave, that there's a phase one environmental done. So I think the manager has enough from there that, but if nobody wants it, then inside town hall, then we should go from there. TIF district point of contact reassignment.
So in your packet is a form that, well, it states exactly what it is. It's a TIF district reassignment for point of contact. Abby is gonna be our TIF contact. It's actually what she was hired for, so if the board so chooses, appoint her as the
Can I get a motion for Abby Sherman to be appointed the tax increment financing district point of contact? And then on here, she is number one, and then I guess in the event that a single point of contact is available, it falls to Dave Attleton, town manager, from there.
Motion?
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So
Congratulations.
You know.
That's one we actually need to sign.
It's just one, I mean, it's only one signature on you or whatever.
Yeah, okay.
So we'll sign that. DWSRF construction and loan application, contract five and six A.
If you want, I can introduce, if you want. So this is step three for the drinking water loan, and this is the construction phase. Look on this, the total amount requested for the loan is nine, nine million seventy thousand dollars. This is step three, so you guys have probably seen a bunch of these a few other times. The forms all look the same, but they are for different, different purposes. And this is to continue the, the water line.
Is this a straight loan, or is this a forgiven back, or is this some
It's a reimbursement.
It's a reimbursement, yep. Pending completion of the
We get reimbursements as, as we submit, as we, as we pay.
Cool.
Who are we stating to sign this?
Yeah, we do need board approval on the last page where it says representative signature, list the three board members, and the clerk needs to sign it, and the authorized representative needs to sign it, which looks like that would be me.
Is this part TIF?
This is the water line.
This is not part of that.
It's not part of
It's gonna have you sign something already.
No, it's not.
The board so
Yeah, so can I get a motion for the board to sign the water infrastructure state revolving loan program funding application for contract five and six A?
Motion.
Any other discussion? That being said, all in favor?
Aye.
I'll pass this one around.
I've got one right there.
Oh, you got one right there.
The color version is in there.
Okay.
You want to sign it now or
Yeah, sure. I mean, you guys can, well, or you can wait till the end and sign everything all at once. There you go. It's that one? I need one official on this, too.
I don't have a pen. Patrick, it doesn't matter who, you can
I'll be right back. Fuck it over.
Smartest way, dude.
Not double printed on that one. No, it got wet, actually.
Today is the 12th.
Yep.
And then you
708, no.
Oh, I think it's dated up there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so number 10, I gotta sign that one. Number 10 is Public Works update, TIF and FEMA.
So for flood recovery, we have eight category C projects. Category C is for roads and bridges, permanent work. Eight of those proj, of the eight projects, four have been obligated by FEMA, meaning payment is pending for those projects. The others are in the works, waiting for FEMA to get back those if they need additional information or not. Of the, they've obligated 1.24 million of the amount obligated, 346,000 has been received. And that will be for work to be completed on one project. That's for Richardson Road, that particular amount. The highway department is currently doing final grade and ditch repair of gravel roads off east mountain roads, Rim Road, Trailview, Trailside, Ledge End, and Roundabout. As part of the permanent work, borings have been completed for the two bridge locations on Rim Road and Ledge End, and for three locations for upsized culverts on Trailside, Trailview, and Great Trail. And Enman Castle Ring is proceeding with the design work for those locations. All the flood recovery work needs to be completed by December 31st, 2025, so this year. It's gonna be a busy summer fall.
Is that deadline because of the funding?
That we got, yes. We got an extension from 2024 to 2025.
Cool.
Once we have all the projects, category C projects obligated, we'll start to work on the category Z, which is for administration of the, of the projects. For Killington Forward, for water construction, contracts one through three A, it's on target for completion this fall. We're gonna start seeing some activity up on the mountain, up on Chagat Mountain. We're anticipating the storage tank team to be mobilized from Texas this week, and they'll start building it next week. And total time to build the tank is about three months. Contract four, construction's underway from Ravine Road to the first culverts that carry Roaring Brook just before the resort. They've been installing between 200 and 300 feet per day. It's going along fine. Contracts five, six A, and seven, you just signed the loan application for construction of contracts five and six A. So we're moving forward with the final plans, anticipating to bid out this fall, and that will be from Ravine Road to Anthony Way. And then contract seven, we'll bid out in about two years when five and six A are finished. For road, phase one B, we're actually having a meeting, a follow-up meeting Wednesday. We had a meeting on April 30th to talk about the punch list items to be completed. Primarily, it's redoing the sand that's in between the cobblestone and the bank, removing the poles on the eastern side and finishing up the bank there, the slope there. Contract end date for that is June 30th of this year, phase one A. VHB has been including the elevation changes that we received from Great Gulf, and that's spent at Great Gulf's expense. We're working on getting final permitting easements and the interim financing. Once we have everything in place, we can go to USDA and get their approval to put the project out to bid, which we anticipate doing this fall to start in the spring of '26. For water system, after you all adopted the ordinance at the last meeting, I posted it in five public places with Will's help, I think you left, but with Will's help. It's on the town website. We posted notice in the paper last week, so it's out there for people to review. We've been working with DeFrain Group on the comprehensive water, wastewater permit for the system to get users connected to it. We actually have another meeting with them at the end of this week to get more information on that process. And then we have a public meeting scheduled for May, Monday, June 16th at 10:00 here at the Public Safety Building to talk to all the prospective users of the water system in contracts five, four, five, and six A, and provide them with additional details. And I'll be sending out notices to all the property owners in the next couple of weeks on that.
Thank you. Any questions? Does the audience have any questions on this item? Does anybody online have a question for this item? Seeing, thank you, Abby. Personal policy discussion, I meant to also say, since we're two weeks away from having an election with two other board members an election with two other board members, I would like to table that one also. It's gonna get very deep, and I think we should have the five members. And I think David just table it.
Yeah, do them all at once.
Sure.
You know, we should set one day and go through all of them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, might need more than one day, but.
It's a special meeting.
So, we are now, um, pushing the number 12, personal policy discussion, to when we have a full board of five. So FY25 budget discussion and financial reports.
So in your packets, the treasurer's report, the restricted funds, uh, status, there is a copy of the current budget status dated May 6th, um, and we do have the, um, budget stat, the comparative budget stat report for, uh, the golf course dated, uh, May 9th. And, um, yeah, that's what we have. We have been running numbers quite a bit since the last week. Um, just a couple of things that we've been working on, and that was with Mary Ellen and Abby and I are going to be having a discussion, hopefully tomorrow morning, if we're all there to do it, um, on where we are with funding for projects. So I have been in touch with, with Community Bank. Um, we're just trying to get our numbers tightened up, so that when we approve for, in order to get financing, that we will know that we're, we're doing the right thing and have the proper numbers. So that's where we're at with that. Um, I did look at the budget, actually, we're, we're not, we're not in bad shape on our general fund budget. There's a couple departments that are over, but at the bottom line, if you go to like the, the last page, we actually are at 90%, which is not a bad spot to be in right now, so, um, our only concern was, and we have had discussion on this for a while, that what, what happens when we pay the, um, the state education tax? So we have had some, some, uh, funds come in since our discussion last week, and I wish I had more of a solid number for you. Maybe Mary Ellen does.
Jim should have the, um, cash forecast, which I showed you.
There you go, oh, yep, yep.
So, we all, three of us received an email, I think last Tuesday or whatever, from Dave?
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Okay. And what the town needs to understand is, is that the clerk, the treasurer's office is giving us a number that was as of April 30th, okay? And, and then just subtracting what was in the bank, subtracting how much is due June 1st, okay? With, and it showed that we were $3 million still in the bank after we subtracted the payment in June. But what it doesn't show is, and a clerk's office is, a treasurer's office is not supposed to be doing cash flows. They do their, um, reconciliation. If you don't, if you'd like to see an email from, within the last two years, from the treasurer saying that to me, that they don't, that's, they don't do a cash flow forecast, I can share that with you, but I don't think we need to go there. But when I received the email, and I saw that come June 1st, after we paid the, um, some $8 million, I believe, to the State of Vermont Education Fund, that we only had $3 million left in the account, and the restricted funds was supposed to be, um, 3.9 million dollars in the fund. To be honest with you, I was like, that's good. I mean, we all voted in, um, 2022, and we went through the board, Chris, Steve Fineran in the beginning, and I, and then Rob Hecker came in. We made presentations to this town multiple times with Stephanie Clark, okay? And it showed that the town would go into a, up to $2 million worth of, I don't wanna call it debt, but, okay? And we could fund it in different ways. Here's a certificate of final vote, the undersigned being, the clerk of the town of Killington does certify, and goes on and on and on, and I've related costs. It goes on to say that, "As well as direct municipal expenses such as departmental or personal costs related to creating or administrating the district to the extent they are paid from the municipal and not education incremental taxes, and are otherwise reimbursed in accordance with law in a total principal amount not to exceed $47 million, which will bring the total TIF district debt approved since the TIF district's creation to $47 million." And to issue bonds, notes, or make inter-fund loans for such purposes in one or more series, and expend up to 650,000 for related costs, which will bring the total related cost authorization by voters to 650,000, with the understanding that tax increment from the properties within the TIF district shall be pledged and appropriated for the payment of such indebtedness or direct cost of the improvements." And that's exactly what the board was doing. We, we could've went out, I guess, and got some kind of loan, but we can't. On a TIF, we were told, you really shouldn't be borrowing because the interest can't. We decided as a board, Fineran was on at the time at 2022, not Rob, okay? That we would go through and use our cash to run through. We have restricted funds, and there's 3.9 million dollars in there. So on May, on April 30th, when you looked at the sheet that was given to us, it said we were only $3 million in the bank. When you look at a cash flow forecast, Mary Ellen, can you, this was dated as of when?
Uh, that was dated as of Friday.
As of Friday. And with the cash flow in here, we're showing that there is a balance of 4,303,000, I believe, at the end of the month?
Don't have it in front of me.
Okay, well, that's what's in front of us here.
Which month?
And this is, this is, I'm going to the last column over here.
For June 20, the estimate?
Yeah.
June 2025? Thirty-nine? Restricted balance one? Oh, the one above that. Cash in hand.
Okay. So then, there's 4,320 whatever, I can't read, it's too small for me. Yeah, I couldn't even read the one on eight and a half. I tried to print, so I asked it to print it on a bigger one. But that's, that's the way we as a town voted. And there it is.
Sorry, is that restricted fund money, or is that all the money? Or is that general?
It's everything. I mean, there's some that's over it. You know, we've got money, and we have almost, I don't know, in restricted funds here.
That's what I'm saying, because they have a restricted funds.
Swimming pool in here. We're not building a new swimming pool. So the board decided to use.
The restricted funds.
Some of the funds. So, I, I know everybody gets really, just look at how much money is in the bank on a day, and how much money is due to the state on June 1st, and doesn't, you got Polly's iPhone, it's in the waiting room. Um, doesn't show what money's coming in. And for example, we approved, um, a loan from M&amp;T Bank of 364,000 dollars to be refunded from Irene with Muscoma. Okay? And we already paid that bill. We're waiting on funding for that bill. So that would be, and I believe Mary Ellen's put that in here. Um, just the other day, we received 300 and, I wanna say, $38,000 on option tax. That is what, and this is not taking anything at, the treasurer's office gives us reconciliation, a treasurer's report, but does not run the cash flow. So what we looked at that day didn't count into what other money's coming in, and it doesn't count in what other money's going out. So if I go to April 30th of 2024, which was last year's, okay? At the end of the month, in April, we had 8,789,000 dollars in the bank. We owed the state 6,787,000 dollars. It left us 2,2144. But yet, we needed to have in the restricted funds back then, 3,495,000. So we were actually short. We didn't have anything. We were short 1,493,000 dollars. So I don't know what all the roar, roar, roar is, but there's that, okay?
Jim, I don't think it's roar, roar, roar. It's fiscally responsible. And one thing that, you know, I talked with you, with you and our finance director earlier today, like, the one thing with the local option tax, that local option tax is shown as a revenue in the budget when it was created. So it's already, you're, you've already expended that, you've already taken that money and accounted for it, because that is, when you, when you take your revenues minus your expenses, you come up with the amount to be raised by taxes. So you've already used this money elsewhere in your revenues to cover your, your, some other expense costs.
And this is where I come back to the certificate of the final vote, that we as voters, this is not town hall's general fund, restricted funds. This is what the voters, go ahead, Abby.
So, background with VEPSE, anytime a TIF district had an inter-fund loan, we received a document stating there is, it, it's, it's a loan from one fund to another. The TIF district had to identify which fund they were borrowing from, and there was an actual loan document that was provided to VEPSE. I'm not aware that one exists for Killington. I've never seen one.
So that'd be like, if you're, this, this crush, the crux of this comes down to taking a loan out of our, or, yeah, effectively, taking a loan from ourselves from the restricted fund. And is that, that's what you're saying, is even in those cases, when you're giving, like, taking a loan from your retirement, um, you would, they would need documentation, they would need paperwork to say, this is where the funding's coming from, this is how we're paying for it, this is where the money should be, and.
And we are going to repay it to that fund.
Right now, we don't have that documentation.
No, that, not that I'm aware of.
Not that we're aware of.
And I would also wanna check, um, I know from my time at VEPSE, that TIF districts also had to identify which fund they were going to borrow from. So we would need to go back through.
If it was.
And verify that we included all of that in the information to voters.
That's what I wanna, are we using a bottom line number that we're drawing from, or are we pulling from specific accounts?
Well, this is the first that we've really heard this, okay? And.
How about happen last year?
No, this is, no, it didn't. And it didn't happen the year before that, okay? We were told that we can take from, and nobody directed that we can, that we have to say each individual fund. So that can get corrected.
Okay.
But, you know, we sit here, and, um, we've had a lot of different managers, okay? Here's an email dated July 25th to the bank, um, Community Bank. Let's remember, last year in August, I don't know where we were getting the money from that. underneath Michael, didn't know where we were getting the money from. That's their job. We're running a town manager, former government. This is not Doug's. He's just coming on, okay? But anyway, when I, I mean, Dave, sorry, because I'm looking at Doug here. But Dave, Doug, Michael Ramsey sent an email to Community Bank saying, hey, Doug, let's put the short-term loan on hold for the moment and see what we can do about a lawnmower for the golf course. The select board has asked that we reach out to see what type of financing options there are for a ground master 4,500. We can get, we can get a loan from whatever ground master or citizen is offering 6.75% for 10 years. A finance director wrote an email the next morning, "Michael, you can't put the short-term financing for the ban on hold. We will not be able to get enough in reimbursements by August 25th to pay back the Muscoma ban. You can't depend on incoming tax money for it either." That is what has exacerbated the cash flow problem in the first place. So what I'm saying here is that there have been some moves underneath different managements, underneath different departments, people pulling away from the finance director of what that job is by going to the bank and saying, forget about it, okay? And I think now that we're moving forward with Dave as the town manager, Abby now in charge of TIF, and Mary Ellen as the finance director, they should solve this and then come up with the numbers. And then maybe it's Mary Ellen putting together, like, with Dave and saying, let's say we used X amount of money from the swimming pool fund. But let's remember also, with that $900,000 or whatever, or whatever money it is, it's not all for TIF. Some of it is for, some of the extra payments, we'll talk about that in another meeting, okay, underneath personnel, whatever, all right? Some of it is for some of the work that's been going on in the roads up above from the flood, okay? We were using general fund money from there. So this is something that the three of us, or in three weeks, the five of us, it's not our job. It's let them, and I think Dave started this off in the beginning, saying that they have a meeting tomorrow. So let's wait to see what they come back with, and I guess it's a matter of finally getting on board of what records need to be kept, and people working together on it.
So, what the, my, my biggest concern is, I wanted to make sure that we were not over our heads in, in all of these projects, which I, I don't believe, it, what we have now, it can easily be fixed, and Abby and, and Mary Ellen, uh, one second, please, have, have looked at all of these, and like, it can be, this can be remedied. Right now, it's sort of, kind of this, it's not really streamlined right now. Um, and, you know, I, I agree that we should be looking at our restricted funds, and Abby and I were talking about this earlier, too, that, um, you know, that, and like I said, we did earlier today, too, that we should be picking a fund and doing it the proper way, especially if that's the way VEPSE wants it, and show where this is actually coming from, and it's not just, we're cutting the checks and saying, well, we have this money in the reserve fund, well, which part of the fund, I think that's a good thing to do. And the other thing, though, that I just wanna say, and then I'm, I'm done, that it is the select board's responsibility to oversee the finances in the town. That is like the one thing that the select board has left to do in a town manager, former government, except for fire and hire, hire and fire me. Um, that's the other thing that the board has to do, is oversee the finances. So I think it is very important that you guys are aware of where things are coming from and how it's happening, and that you're asking the questions about all of this regardless. Um, you know, even knowing like what the projects are, like, Abby's way more descriptive report than mine's gonna be, was great with all the projects, and you guys need to know what's going on with that. I think that's part of the whole thing, so when people ask you, you can answer the question, too. This is how we're funding it, this is what's going on. It's important.
I agree with that, and I think we missed it, I see. I think we missed it over the last two or three years.
Yeah.
And needs to be corrected. Go ahead, LaCree, shut up.
So I just wanna, since I'm, just Patrick is new and, I just wanna remind everyone that there are certain restricted funds that are voted by the voters, and you cannot borrow from those funds, right? Right off the top of my head, Jim mentioned the pool fund, that was voted. The land records restoration fund, that was voted, that is also by statute. The library, I believe, those were voted. You have to be careful which funds you borrow from, uh, knowing that you cannot touch the ones that were voter approved.
Thank you. So, um, I think where we're going with this is that we need to have the employees that work on this come together and come back to us with a document that kind of explains where we're going. That's why we've hired these professional people to do it for us, okay? And I appreciate, you know, the information from our former treasurer. I'd just like to say that I think it's kind of a little strange that in 2016, when I wasn't on the Board, you know, we were borrowing $2 million for three or four years in a row to cover, because we didn't even have enough money in it, but moving on forward. It doesn't make it right.
No.
So, let's get the group together.
Using the past doesn't necessarily make it right.
Let's get the group together.
Right, because I don't want that to happen on my watch. That's not something that I want to be known for. I mean, this is the thing, like, we're going to make sure we're running, you know, a responsible budget on all sides, and that we're using the taxpayers' money responsibly.
Funding mechanisms besides borrowing from.
And it can be done. I mean, we're already looking at, you know, the budget that was approved for FY '26, you know, does have some increases, which I think we're going to be fine come the end of next year. But we're going to, we're going to, we're going to fix this. You know, I, I am positive that the people we have in place, we're going to get this done, so.
And I think we need to wait. And I think they need to go through, no, there's no action, this is just, but I think we need to wait. And I think we need for them to come to us, and then they can go through and see which funds can. Or Abby, is there a way of making a loan, taking a loan out specifically for, but we can't pay the interest? Is that another way of doing it?
Taking a loan out from our?
No, from a bank.
From a bank without paying interest?
Well, without counting it to TIF. Let's not, can we borrow money from a bank to cover? I mean, I think that's part of what we're trying to do. We're getting loans to cover in between when we get an invoice from a construction company to do something, then we use community bank. But I would guess you need to go to VEPSY and say, we're borrowing X to cover.
So, we have a $47 million maximum amount that we can borrow. Whether it's a ban or permanent financing, whatever it is. We have grants, we can get loans in anticipation of grants, but doesn't count towards that $47 million.
The downside to that is, once you borrow from it, even if you pay it back in a short-term bridge, it still counts against?
Towards the $47 million. Unless you're refinancing it with a permanent?
Right, right.
Loan instrument.
So?
But the grant one, you don't, if you can take from there, so.
If you have grants, right.
But I think we're not here to solve that. I think this is why we have a town manager that we're in charge of. Well, I think you understand it.
Yeah, we're, no.
So, I don't know, you have any other discussion? Ricky?
We going to get bills paid?
Hopefully.
Terrible, so, Mary Ellen?
Excuse me. There is, we will have all our bills paid. This is not, and revenue is different than cash, okay? It's a different terminology. Just because the, the option tax is already in the budget, it does not mean that it has been received. The cash flow just talks about what you've received at that period of time and what has been spent. That's it.
And now, the only job is to make sure that whatever funds are, but I just, like, that email, and I get it, but to say that the TIF ate the whole $900,000 or whatever, I don't agree with it. There's other money going elsewhere and other things.
I don't think that's what the email was, was that we were just concerned that after the state's payment, that we would have less money in the coffers than was covering our reserve.
But it wasn't a true?
That was the concern.
Yeah, I know, but it wasn't a true cash flow statement, okay? It's like saying, I have a mortgage payment due on June 1st, and I say I have X amount of money in the bank today, and I have to make that payment. I don't have enough. I still have six weeks of getting payroll into my checking account to make that payment, okay? So, that's, I, I don't want to go any further. I think we need these folks to come back to us with the solution, okay? AP warrants, review and sign?
So, we have finally made it to the point of having the warrants in your board packets. The invoices are right here for golf, and I sent you guys out an email last week saying, if you have any questions on the warrants, now's the time to raise them, you know? So, we're hoping to do it this way. I think it's going to work fine. If you guys don't like it, we'll go back to their way. But this does, you know, it allows you guys to actually approve the warrants in our meeting, which really should be done that way anyway. So, there are four of them, which are in front of you. Any questions, concerns, comments?
I received an email on Friday night at 8:05 PM saying, here are the financial warrants are attached and invoices are available on Monday, if you would like to review any prior to the meeting.
That was definitely before eight o'clock when I sent it, because I was still at work.
I'm telling you that I got the, I've got the email, not from you, okay? I'm not mentioning names here, all right? But it was showing me, telling me specifically at 8:05 is when I got it coming in, and saying, here are the warrants, and here's the meeting stuff at 8:05.
I had it in my packet when I stopped in earlier.
I got the email at 8:05 telling me that the packets are on, on the front desk. I'm like, I'm not signing the warrants today. I don't have any questions, but you two can make a motion and you can approve. If you have any questions to.
So, I emailed you guys Friday at 2:40.
Saying what?
When the packets were approved. Saying, gentlemen, Linda will be emailing Select Board packets momentarily to all of you. The packet now includes a copy of the warrant, which I would like to have all of you review before Monday night's meeting, and ask questions about the invoices at the, but that's a run-on sentence. When we get to the warrant item on the agenda, I will have the invoices at the meeting in case you want to discuss them. And then I had a reminder that we had the 5:30 hearing.
So, since you just said the person's name, you said they would be going out shortly, and I got the email at 8:05 on a Friday night.
Did you not have time to review?
No.
We have packets in the town office. I mean, we could just?
I'm in the town office. Why didn't somebody just bring it down to me? I got an email from you saying, they will be out shortly. That's what was just read to us. They will be sent out shortly.
Yeah, I tried to come in, because I know that I want it for the weekend, so I mean?
Well, I was told it would be emailed out shortly. And I didn't get it until 8:05. I think we're making a big deal out of?
Yeah, I'm confused what you're, I'm confused what you're asking.
I'm not ready to sign. You guys can make the motion and go for it.
I had a question. So, can we make a motion and talk about it?
You guys, there's still a forum to vote here, so if you guys want to vote, approve them.
On the golf?
Yep.
It's warrants? I believe it's golf, golf one, the one that is, the $92,000. It's all pesticides. Do we know if that is for the year, or is that a, I'm just wondering, do they both buy it or something?
I can certainly look at that invoice right now, Patrick, and let you know.
In the past year, they buy both chemicals.
I'm sure that's, that's kind of one thing. It's a pretty big number, so.
Yeah.
What was the name of the company that started the NASS, right?
Yeah, Synatech?
Normally, that's what it is.
Yeah.
There's two different, I forget what it is, but there's two different chemicals. That's on the budget line.
That was, that was my?
Flip through this while you guys are talking.
Actually, I did have a question too.
To Synatech?
No, 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 it's actually another one there, just maybe it's. That's a lot of money.
That is a lot of money, so.
And I believe they buy it all in bulk.
Yeah, I mean, we've got a whole bunch here. I mean, we're talking 119 gallons.
Okay, so that's what I was saying, is like the gallon, the unit weight's matching.
I will certainly inquire though, and make sure that we are?
As long as the, the unit, like, the pallets is matching.
You can look up in their budget, how much they budgeted for the year.
I didn't think about that, yeah.
I can, I'll?
But I'm pretty sure it's close to that. But yeah, you can look at the budgeted, what they budgeted for, and then you'll?
Right, we'll see if that's?
You'll get your answer.
Yeah, because that was a big, that's a lot of pesticides.
Yeah, and then they, so they're front-loaded and then?
Carry it through the season?
Carry it through the season.
What was your question?
I also had a question, the, let's see, it's 14892. There's one on there for Webb for asphalt. Webb's a pipe place, and you get asphalt from FW Webb?
Hold on, which one are you on, Rick?
Uh, it's page 44, so it'd be the next one, page 1. Not that it's a big deal, I just wondered if maybe it was written there.
I wonder if that was coded wrong, because that should be?
Because I mean, I don't believe FW Webb has asphalt.
No, they don't. They sell pipe.
Yeah. Pipe and plumbing stuff.
So, that could just be, where did you see that?
The bottom line of this one right here.
Oh, yeah, look at that. FW Webb. Yep, let me look and see, I'm sure that that was probably coded, or just labeled wrong. I'll tell you right now.
Do you want us to wait?
No. No, you can't wait.
I can see, so it's?
This is one of my stack, actually.
It's definitely?
But can we make a motion to approve the?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter.
Can we make a motion to accept the town $71,753.51 warrant and the $892,63.8 with a few, just corrections on that, okay? To code it correctly?
It's not, actually not coded incorrectly. It was, it's from Webb, and the abbreviation for the, the part that was made says BLD major ASHLT, so it probably looked like asphalt. It's definitely just the abbreviation for the?
Bill's correct.
So, I'm just going to say, can I get a motion for that? Those two, the town? All in favor?
Aye.
Then for the golf course, is it $252.59 and the $92,36.59 warrant? Can I get a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
You two can sign, thank you. All right?
Taking a raise and signing.
No, it's all right. So, it is 7:41. We'll call it 7:45, okay? We allow underneath the citizens' comments and concerns 10 minutes in the current. So, I'll look to the public and ask, starting from the right, Andrew?
Can I hand up here too?
Do you have something underneath citizens' comments? And let's be, there is a whole room here, and there's a whole Zoom, and we're allowing till 7:55. I'm giving more than the 10 minutes.
Yeah. I think in documents posted, it said five minutes per person.
No.
I would have to look at that one, yeah.
I read it an hour ago before coming here.
Okay.
Pull it up while we're talking.
But I'll be brief, so I'd like to mention that I went through some of the paperwork, invoices received and paid to Langrock Sparing Wall or lawyer that the town uses. And there are two invoices missing. Invoice number 242896. Do I have a stack of them? Each time we paid, it has a nice, clear description what they charged us for. For example, email to Jim, talk to telephone conference call and so on, so. So, I was able to locate, locate May, June, July, August, September. And then the next one that's here is December. So, we're missing two. Obviously, we paid approximately two, maybe $4,000. And I did ask the town manager to look into it, get in touch with the, with the accounting team of the lawyer and request a copy, because that should be in our record, just in case we get audited. So, that's, that's the one item that I found. Second, I would like to mention something. I'm not sure if anybody in this room or online heard what happened last week at the town hall Tuesday. There was a 911 call involving town employees. I did specifically request information for the case number, names, but I did not receive that information. So, hopefully, within the next few days, I receive that, and we can discuss it, present it to the Board, and we can have a discussion what happened. Because in 21 years of living in Killington, I think it's the first time I've heard about 911 call to our town office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Dave?
Nothing.
I'm sorry. Jake?
Got someone?
Linda? Ken?
So, got a couple of comments. The last board meeting, I attended by Zoom. I read the meeting minutes as they came out, okay? I also looked at the video, okay? And to say the least, it was a hostile environment, okay? And I thought it was disgraceful, okay? We have some, and had and have some, really great people, okay, working for this town. People that are devoted, okay, do their best, okay, to report work and do their work accurately and service the town people, okay, properly, while others, okay, prefer to take their business in another direction by spreading ill will and making accusations and also, okay, rumors. I think this is a disgrace. I, for one, okay, am having difficulty in knowing, okay, that my taxpayer dollars, okay, are going, okay, for such an environment, okay, and individuals, okay, to service this town. There's been a newly, okay, appointed or elected, hired town manager, okay, David, which I have an awful lot of confidence in, okay? He himself, okay, said at the last meeting that he actually regrets, okay, taking on this position, okay, for what he's gotten himself into. That is terrible, okay? I've been following this, okay, since Dave Lewis retired, all right? We've had Kathleen Ramsey, we've had Seth Webb, Deborah Schwartz, Chet Paganbar, Michael Ramsey. Tom is an interim manager, and now we've got David, okay? It was said, okay, at last meeting, okay, how are you guys going to keep a town manager by David? That is a concern, okay? Somebody, okay, other people should be out there, okay, scratching their heads, saying, how come we've got such a turnover, which you just mentioned today, Jim, okay, during the meeting, in town managers? I think somebody should be looking at this and saying, how come? Killington residents, okay, need to get more involved, okay, in town affairs, particularly Select Board meetings. They need to review the minutes, they need to watch, okay, the video, and they need to be paying more attention, okay, and looking for resolve of action items in the meetings, okay, and closure to some of these items. Again, okay, the townspeople are paying the taxes, they're paying salaries of the individuals in the office, at the road department, and they need to get involved and see where the money is being spent and how it's being spent. I think the town in closing, okay, needs to adopt a new meeting of Killington forward, okay? Put the issues on the table, resolve them, okay? And then move forward, okay, with the new town manager, with support and the proper individuals in the town and the town hall. We talked about cash flow tonight. Cash flow, I brought up months ago, okay? And I said, there's no reason, okay, why contractors, Casella, Markowski, John Russell, now that he's on board, okay, loan payments, et cetera, can't be put on a cash flow chart and tracked, along with, okay, what's coming in, okay, so that you have some kind of an idea as to money coming in and money going out, and when that's going to occur. And another question too regarding delinquent taxes. What are we doing about collecting delinquent taxes?
Well, this is up to the town manager, he'll come back to us when he gets to it. This is citizens' input?
I can answer that right now, if you'd like. So, I did speak with our town attorney today, Ken, where he suggested we wait till June 1st to actually start the? today, Ken, where he suggested we wait till June 1st to actually start the tax sale process. So, his recommendation was wait till the board's elected. That's the next meeting. We won't be able to say that anymore. But that was his recommendation. So, I'll have Mona send the list to him the first week of June.
The annual town report, okay, makes note of those individuals, companies, et cetera, that are delinquent in taxes. 21, 22, 23, 24. I started doing some digging, okay, in some of these businesses, some of these people, et cetera, and I think others need to do that as well. Thank you. You can also go to the Vermont Business Information if you see company names, and you can drill down as to who the owners are, okay, of the different properties and businesses.
Thank you, Ken. You're welcome. Lucretia, do you have anything?
No.
Phil Bynes, do you have anything?
I just got one quick clarification, Jim. Okay, you said repeatedly during the discussion of the budget that the treasurer's office does not do cash flow analysis, but you never said who did. And I presume that job falls into the town manager's office and the financial people that are working for him, but I think it should be stated publicly who is going to do the cash flow analysis.
I think that's a good question, and I think we'll leave it up to the town manager to come back to us. But I was just reading off what an email was sent.
No, I know. Yeah, I know.
I would take that underneath the town manager form of government, that underneath the statute, it states that the town manager is in charge of the finances. So, if the town manager wants to do it, or if the town manager wants to go to the finance director, but that's good. So, thank you, Bill.
Yeah, as I said, I just noticed that you said who didn't, and there wasn't a, this person, Will.
So, Bill says on my name, or my position.
You just got mentioned like 10 times in this conversation.
So, we do have a finance director. I really am hoping that we can come to a point in our office where the finance director, the treasurer work together, so that when we come up and actually have this conversation in-house today with the finance director, too, that I want everyone to be on the same page. I want us to see where we're at, and that everyone's working together, and it's gonna be a huge lift, but we've got to get there at some point to make it happen, you know? So, that's my answer.
Thank you, Dave.
Sure.
Mary Allen?
Okay, I would like to. I would like to say that I did the cash flow. It is there in the packets right there, and it does have future contractor payments in that. I would also like to respond to Mr. Wanzar. When he was talking about ill will in the office.
Make sure to address.
I was. I'm talking to the board. Mr. Wanzar came into the office last week and went into Dave Atherton's office, closed the door, and then proceeded to scream at him to the point where it was as if Mr. Wanzar was standing near my desk, and one of the main things that he said was, "Fire her." Now, if I'm, if people are gonna be talking about poor behavior, I think I would like to add that one in there myself.
Thank you. Roger?
No thanks. I'm gonna get it tonight.
Jim? Jane?
Two on mine. And Jane.
Peggy? I'm sorry. Anybody else in the back row? You've had the chance. On the line, Ron Kish, online.
Hey, Jim. I didn't get a chance to speak when you were talking about the fire station earlier. I would also be interested in it, and there was one correct, one item that was stated about Mr. Conti being an adjoining property. He is not. I own the property on all three sides of that firehouse, the fourth side being the frontage on River Road.
In the email?
So, I, you know.
Does he have a?
I have. I mean, even his documents that he sent to me.
I'm gonna stop here, Ron. Okay, what the board had said earlier was is that we're gonna first go out, and then we're going to, if nobody needs it in town hall, it will be a fair, open bid or closed bid, okay? And we'll go from there.
Which one's the fair one?
Closed bid, and we go from there. I don't even know if we know if there's a well on that property or if there's septic on that property.
Right.
So, we'll probably, if nobody, that's one of the things that town's gonna need to look into, if we want to use it for a garage or something else, okay? But if none of the departments want it, then I think we would put it up for sale as is, and that is up to the people to do their due diligence.
Right.
Of what they're voting, what they're trying to bid on, and go from there. But that being said, you know, you'll have a chance when it goes out, and it will have to be put in the paper. Okay? So. Thank you. Thank you, Ron. So, Steve, last name?
Yeah. I would.
Steve Finer?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we're just saying, say your last name. So, the person that's writing.
Oh, Finer. F-I-N-E-R.
Thank you.
I apologize. My video camera is not transmitting.
Okay.
So, the lower fire station, as it's referred to, I would like to make a strong, strong pitch that the town really look at its use, because it has a great value to the town, to the fire department, to the historical society, to the library, and so I think we need to look at it very strongly before we put it up for any kind of bid. That's what I'd like to say about that. My other, I met with, I've looked, and I have not been able to find on the plans for the new town office, a set space equal to or larger than the room you're sitting in. And it's been stated at various times that there's a great meeting room in there. I cannot find it. That's just a statement.
Thank you. Anything else, Steve?
No, those are my two things. Thank you.
So, we started this, and I gave an extra three minutes to go to 7:55. We actually went over two. So, next thing is selecting member from comments and concerns?
I have a.
Do you have any? Okay. Any comments or concerns?
Yeah, I've got one. First off, I'd like to start off by, what happened last week, I think, was an embarrassment. I realize that there are rules and procedures, but I think we can treat people decently, and I think Mona should be given an apology. And I don't know if you're going to get it from everybody, but I will apologize, because I was embarrassed that that went down the way it did.
Thank you, Mona.
Patrick, any comments?
None that's on my head right now. No.
I'd like to say that this is our meeting, and if people want to laugh, they can step outside. And if other people want to, like, start yelling and screaming and ripping into a board member, that also is not correct. And having people saying, "No, no, no. We're not done. We're not done," I would like to maybe, in the next meeting, why don't we just put on item number four, bash Jim half, okay? Get it out of your systems and go from there. I don't need an apology for what went on last week, because, yes, that was out of control, and people that I see that were not here, okay, that watched the video, and some people I don't even know, and they go, "How do you do that? How do you sit through that?" I asked a person to stop laughing, okay, and then I get called out for calling a person by their first name. If you go to any of the DRB meetings, I state, "We're being recorded. There's speakers up above." I stand with it. There is no need for an apology. Sorry, Ricky. Okay. Any other concerns? I can agree to disagree on that one. Yep. Managers' report.
Couple things. One that was brought up at the last meeting is to follow up on the interim town manager's time sheets. I did approve those. They were sent late, and I did not see an issue with them. So, some great news, and we need some great news right now. We did get our Class II paving grant for River Road. So, Kevin and I are working on RFP. We're just fine-tuning it today to put out, put a bid out for the River Road, reclaim and pave, and we're actually gonna do, probably do culverts, the same, you know, get someone to do that. We're also working on two other RFPs for East Mountain Road from Route 4 to 2449, East Mountain Road, and West Hill. We're looking for a full reclaim on that, too. So, moving forward with some paving. Hopefully, we have some nice, smooth roads by the end of the year, and River Road is desperately needed, because I'd really like to drive my Miata to work, and I'm not doing it right now.
The speed limit is still 25 miles an hour on River Road.
Yes, it is.
Even with new pavement, it'll still be 25 miles an hour.
But then it'll be what's problem and not the highway department, so. So, just a town office update, just to let you guys know. We have been starting to see some middles for stuff. I approved the ones for the heat pumps today. The electricians can't start last week to move the panel for an anticipation of the vault, which is gonna be start, the installation will start today.
Did we find out about the stairs? I know that was brought up last time.
Yep, so we're not gonna do the stairs right now. We don't have to. And we did meet with Russell's. We'll look at maybe next year's, but not this one, but the following year. Maybe we'll talk about putting a lift in or stairs or an elevator or something at that point. I think we should look at something just for ADA compliance, and none of us are getting any younger, so all of us probably have to use the elevator at some point. But it's moving along, so pretty excited. Hopefully, by the end of summer.
Thank you. Is that it?
That's all I have today.
So, item number 18, it's executive session personnel. The appointment, employment or evaluation of a public officer or employee, provided that a public body must make the final hiring or appointment decision and explain its reasons for the decision in an open meeting, 1 VSA 313A3, to include the town manager.
And can you add the fire chief?
And the fire chief, and do we want the police chief in?
I don't think that's necessary.
Okay. I don't know what it's about, so now we're bringing in the fire chief. So, can I get a motion to go in executive session, including the fire chief?
Motion.
Motion. All right.